Ms. Williams, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I gotta take this off while I'm talking here. All right, first of all, welcome everyone that came out to council meeting with us tonight, and we appreciate you coming out, and we've put some measures in place so that everyone can practice social distancing here in the room. We ask if you're not speaking or at the podium that you wear your mask during the meeting, and welcome everyone. For our citizens that aren't participating in in-house meeting tonight, we still have the phone number where you can call in and express your concerns. That phone number is 844-844-9200. When you hear the prompt, you'll dial 398145, followed by the pound sign. You'll hear question and answering has started. At that time, you'll hit the star six. If you would like to speak, you'll be asked to press the number one to be added to the queue. Press number one. While you're in the queue, you'll hear the audio feed of the meeting. Wait until you are prompted by the moderator, then you can share your comments with council. Participants are reminded that through prerecorded prompts, refer to questions. The public hearing is a citizen comment portion of the meeting, and counselors will not reply to your comments as you make them. That brings us to item number two. Item number two is to adopt the agenda meetings. Any questions about item two?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to postpone the consideration of zero Tiffany Drive rezoning until our September 14 meeting, noting that the applicant has requested to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Mr. Short has asked that we postpone consideration of zero Tiffany Drive rezoning until September 14 meeting, noting the request of the applicant. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four oh. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
As amended, but yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Dr. Hostetter's made a motion to adopt the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Williams has made a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four oh. Item number four is matters from council. Danny, the council members have anything they'd like to share?
Do we still need to pass the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Isn't that what we just passed?
I thought that was the agenda.
You're right. Okay, I'm sorry. Item number three is to consider adopting the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, noting the postponement of the rezoning?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes four oh. Now, item number four. Do we have any matters from council members to share?
I've got my end-of-month announcement to remind folks of my open constituent meeting. I'm going to have one September the 1st, the first Tuesday of the month, at 8:30 in the morning at Constitution Park Pavilion. You know, bring a chair, I'll have an extra or two, but that way we can be outside and distance appropriately, but bring your own coffee or drink. I've also had some requests to see if we can do an evening meeting, so I'm going to aim for September the 8th, which would be the next Tuesday, at 6:30 PM at the same location, Constitution Park Pavilion. And we'll see if that works for schedules, and see if some of the folks that might not be able to come out during the day can make it in the evening. But I look forward to talking to people about whatever their concerns are. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just share a couple of items of interest, I think, to celebrate as a council and as a community. So I serve on the council liaison to the Central Chando Valley District Commission, and received word just over the weekend of an opportunity to go up to Weir's Cave this afternoon at noon, and was joined by Congressman Klein and members of the U.S. Department of Commerce. The CSPDC was a recipient of $400,000 CARES Act grant to be used and to support economic recovery. They're going to use those resources of particular interest for our community, and I've shared that with our executive director, is the application of potentially looking at a grant writer, administrator, that will serve to identify additional U.S. Commerce and EDA grants to support our recovery as a region and as a community. So really neat opportunity. We were only one of four in the whole state that received that grant, so that was really appreciate Bonnie Rita Sells and her staff for their diligence. Also learned, maybe I just sort of missed it, but something also to celebrate, again, we had it at Chando Valley Regional Airport, and learned that back in the fall, I think there was some consideration for council, where Greg from the airport had come and provided an update of a potential grant match where the city and our regional partners would contribute to guaranteeing and backing a $3 million hanger and improvement project at the airport. I learned today that just a few short weeks ago, that grant was successful, and so we are recipient of a $2 million federal grant to supplement that project, and talked to Mr. Campbell following that meeting this afternoon, and they are hard at work to get those leased up and under construction. Chicken and egg, we'll see what happens first, but very exciting for our community, and just anecdotally would offer that also learned that the corporate jet community is flying high out of Chando Valley Regional Airport, which I think speaks to, hopefully, a quick recovery for all of our regional partners, including the city of Waynesboro. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Terry, for all your hard work. All right, that brings us to item number five, and item number five is to consider introducing an order and is amending the City Code, Chapter 86, Utilities, Section 2631 and 33, as related to the deposit of service. Mr. McCormick?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. City Code, Section 86-31, titled Deposits Required Before Beginning Service to Tenants, governs when deposits are required for water service connection, how much the deposit will be, and how the deposit shall be collected. Currently, the first paragraph of this section notes, "A deposit of $150 must be collected from all residential tenants within the city, and a deposit of $250 must be collected from all non-residential tenants before water service shall be turned on." The code section goes on in the next paragraph to say, "The deposit for residential tenants shall be billed at a rate of $75 over the first two billing cycles. The deposit for non-residential tenants shall be billed at a rate of $125 over the first two billing cycles." The attached ordinance serves to remove the contradiction between the first and second paragraph of City Code, and only give reference to billing the deposit over the first two cycles, which is the city's current practice. This ordinance also serves to correct the heading of Code Section 8626 and 8633. Both sections' current title refers to deposits, but neither contain information relating to deposits. This ordinance will remove that reference. If you have any questions about the proposed ordinance, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Any questions for Mr. McCormick? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion on the motion? All right, this ordinance will receive final consideration at our September 14 city council meeting. This brings us to item number six, staff presentation, and this presentation is to receive a report from staff regarding the expenditures of care funds to date.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. If any of you folks who can't see the screen want to move to a better location, I think you can swivel your chairs, or they're probably spaced far enough apart not to worry about that, so we're struggling a little bit with how to set the room up today, so. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Act, or CARES Act of 2020, provides $150 billion in assistance to U.S. states, local, territorial, and tribal governments to address the direct impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Commonwealth Virginia received approximately $3.1 billion, some of which was distributed in turn to cities and counties on a per capita or by population allocation. The city Waynesbourners received two allocations of CARES Act funding, for a total of $3,948,760. The CARES Act money comes to us, though, with fairly strict guidelines as to its use, and the funds are primarily meant to ensure the delivery of essential government services, especially as related to public health, public safety, and human services. There is a provision that allows that we can provide economic support to the community as it relates to COVID-19 impacts. It is not a general stimulus program, and it is a new program, so it didn't come with well-established or longstanding rules. We received some additional money through the general CARES allocation, or the CARES bill, that made additional appropriations to the Community Development Block Grant Program, which we participate. Well, the CDBG program has longstanding rules in place and guidelines, and they remained unchanged. This program, however, did not come with that sort of tradition. So local governments have been working through the guidelines that we did get, and trying to determine how the money can be spent. It's something that, as we look across the Commonwealth, other local governments are trying to figure out and sometimes frustrated with. The U.S. Treasury has continually updated a frequently asked question page. We've also seen that the Virginia Municipal League, Virginia Association of Counties, have provided guidance as they come to them, and then ultimately, we turn to our auditors and some other public auditors to quiz them as to whether or not they think some of the uses that we consider are going to be legitimate. Nonetheless, what we're starting to see is there are programs that seem to be common across a lot of folks who are using these funds. The eligible expenditures tend to be, and they come with these broad guidelines, one, that they are necessary expenditures incurred to the public health emergency, so they have to be, whatever you're spending the money on has to be as a result of the coronavirus pandemic. They were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27 of 2020. In other words, you can't supplant the budget that existed at that time, and if, as we had to do, you had to make budget cuts, you can't replace those expenditures with CARES money. And then finally, that the money has to be spent by December 30 of this year. Eligible expenditures of the CARES money include, as I mentioned, medical expenses, that money can be spent for health clinics and hospitals, those types of things, public health expenses that are related to delivery of either testing or in response to patient care and treatment, payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, or similar employees, whose services are primarily devoted to responding to COVID-19, expenses to facilitate any types of COVID-19-related health, public health measures, in other words, providing personal protective equipment, social distancing measures, additional sanitation and disinfection of facilities, expenses associated with professions of economic support, so that's where you see we'll consider some of it tonight, help to local businesses, help to folks who are struggling to pay rent or utilities because they've had a layoff in the family or an illness in the family, and then any other COVID-related expenditures that the local government deems necessary. So that's a pretty broad category, and that's where, as I say, many local governments are trying to test the limits of legitimate uses of the CARES fund. There are, you know, very explicit rules that we can't use the money simply to replace lost revenue, and so, whereas that would probably be the thing that would most help a lot of local governments, it's the thing that has, you know, is most explicitly prohibited. In Waynesboro, so far, we've either expended or earmarked money in the following categories. One is that we've earmarked $600,000, which is 15% of the city's allocation, for the school system, and we're finding that our neighbors here in the valley are doing likewise, that most of the local governments are providing 10% or 15% of their CARES money to the schools. The school systems did receive their own direct care support through an educational grant program, and you'll deal with that on your agenda tonight, as well as we appropriate those funds. Those are separate from the funds that came to the city, the $3.9 million. We've also provided $250,000 to the Valley Community Services Board to help with temporarily housing homeless individuals. We've spent more than $200,000 in personal protective equipment and supplies for employees who have had to continue to work throughout the pandemic, and then also for supplies that were provided through a program to local businesses. We've, at your last meeting, and I believe on this consent agenda appropriated $150,000 to a local nonprofit sustainability grant, and those would be funds that are for nonprofits who are located in Waynesboro and provide services here in the community. We originally appropriated $150,000 to a small business assistance grant in the first round. $133,000 were actually distributed to businesses based on applications, and then this evening, we're going to ask the council to consider an additional $150,000 for a small business assistance program. We've spent about $90,000 on, for employees to comply with the family's First Coronavirus Response Act. The FRICRA basically said for local governments and private businesses that employed less than 500 people, that there were circumstances in which they had to provide payment to their employees, either because the employees were under quarantine, and we've had a number of quarantines of city employees, so if you're quarantined for 14 days, then your employer has to pay you for that time, or if you're on sick leave because you have coronavirus. There's also a provision, that's an extension of the Family Medical Leave Act, that basically says that if an employee can't provide daycare or childcare, and they have to stay home to do that, then they're allotted or provided 10 weeks of their salary at 2/3 of their normal pay rate. We've spent more than $60,000 setting up employees who can telework, and that's for everything from laptops to expanding the city's VPN, that's the network system, so that they can access files over the city's network. We spent more than $17,000 on election materials in May. We've spent money for additional disinfection and personal protective equipment at the Middle River Regional Jail. Our additional cleaning costs have been a bit more, almost $8,000, and then other includes, the biggest expenditures in other would be things like moving the, splitting up our fire companies, and as you know, I think we've temporarily housed our fire, one fire company, in several different locations. If you go to the police department, you'll note that you can't simply walk into the building, you go through a screening area, so that shelter for screening is part of other, and then other small supplies to be able to set up either social distancing measures you'll see in a lot of places, things like Plexiglas screens and things like that. So our estimated expenditures to date are a bit more than $1.5 million. As I said, we have more than $3.9 million, and so, you know, we're in the same boat that a lot of local governments are in, is to say, how can we legitimately use this money to, you know, to be able to continue to deliver essential government services, and to the best benefit of our, of our community in response to COVID-19? And there are lots of things that we can think of that we could spend the money on, but the basic question that has to be asked is, is it in response to the pandemic? Is it, you know, are we doing something to mitigate the impact, or to prevent additional spread in the community, or to keep, you know, to ensure that we put public safety people out there in response, or public works folks to make sure we continue to deliver water and sewer services and those kinds of things? So at this point, I'm glad to answer questions that the council may have. We'd certainly, we'd love to solicit any thoughts or ideas that the council might have relative to the use of these CARES funds, and I'm sure this is a topic that we will continue to have over the next several months here.
Any questions for Mr. Shaw?
I think that, Mr. Shaw, you had told us that the first round of the business grants, most of that money had been earmarked, if not distributed already?
It's everything that was requested of us, that were legitimate expenditures, was funded, and so that was $133,000. We did make a couple of changes, or were proposing a couple of changes to the program, and we'll see if it gets additional response. One is that many local governments and the state, early on, said that if you had received payroll protection money, PPP money, and there were a couple of other grant programs, then you wouldn't be eligible for the local CARES grant money. We've seen a nuance where, basically, as we read the federal guidelines, you could allow that somebody could also receive CARES money, but they couldn't use it for the same expenses for which they'd already been reimbursed, either through a federal grant program or insurance. So, for instance, if you received PPP money, and you had paid your rent for March and April and May, then you couldn't apply for the local CARES money, and also pay, you know, double pay that rent, or take the money for the value of that rent. So you can't double up on the expenditures, but maybe that will encourage a few more people to apply.
Appreciate that clarification, Jim. I've got a couple of just things, and of course, we've chatted about it, but I told you I was going to mention it this evening, is, so, the survey of employers, so prior to the Renaissance grant, the first round being initiated and provided into the community, I think Mr. Hitchens had distributed a survey to our business community, and sort of soliciting what their needs are, and sort of expectations, and sort of a resource, and when we did Renaissance round one, the PPP checks had basically arrived in people's mailboxes, and they had satisfied their labor, the labor expenses. But we certainly, as all, to my knowledge, all communities have been applying that standard of, if you've got PPP, sorry, folks, you can't even apply for local contributions or funds. But in the essence of, you know, that additional clarification, as we're starting to see how this evolved, and other communities are applying it, I would offer that it might make sense to perhaps even initiate another survey, to just sort of do, hey, what are your needs? Did you apply for PPP? And also, to somehow broadcast this deep and far and wide into our community, because I think there are a lot of small businesses who felt we were too small. Last week, I talked to about a half a dozen businesses, just like kind of called them up, you know, cold-called them, and I said, so how are things going? And what I heard was, well, they didn't, they didn't apply last time because they thought they were too small, or, second of all, well, I did PPP, so I'm not eligible for anything. So with that, I think that is going to create a larger net, hopefully, of folks that are struggling out there, particularly for rent and mortgage, and those expenses, even utilities, not water, city water use utilities, but just electric and gas. So I would offer up that, I would love to see us maybe do that other survey, and then also just find a way to maybe work with the Commissioner of Revenue's Office or otherwise, and really, really broadcast this deeply to make sure people are aware of it, because I know if it's printed in the paper, it's awesome, but it's one day. It might last on Facebook for two days, but then it's out of the consciousness of the community, and so I think if you get it directly, that might encourage folks. I'd also offer that, you know, we're sort of modeling it off of, there's no fixed figure, dollar figure, that any community, at least that I've seen, which isn't, you know, tons, but a few, that are, you know, there's no fixed dollar amount, some ceiling. Obviously, we made $150,000 available under Renaissance Phase 1, we got $133,000 of eligible expenses, but, and so we've sort of repeated that under, contemplated that for round two based off of past experience. I kind of think that if we do, we do a deep dive, we really cast the net for folks that may have just, just not even regarded it the first time, we may blow up the $150,000 cap. At least, the folks that I've talked to, that, you know, of course, I'll follow back with them after I got that clarification this afternoon, that we will allow non-prior reimbursed expenses to be eligible under this Renaissance Phase 2. And I know we're going to consider that later this evening, but I would offer up, just to stew on it, folks, as we're doing this, is maybe it might make sense to, we could do a round three, but the thing is with the round three is, we're going to hear it once, we're going to wait another two weeks, we're going to do the applica, so you're, we're adding a 30 days of people struggling, our business community struggling, to potentially struggling, maybe not opening the doors, again, we're adding another 30 days on that. So I would offer up respectfully that we might want to even consider increasing that allocation this evening. If only $133,000 of new expenses come in, fine, so be it, but at least we're not holding up that allocation of resources that could be supportive for our business community, so. And, yeah, it's all ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Any other questions for Mr. Shaw? No actions required on this.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, item number seven is appropriation of CARES Act Fund. Item number seven is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating funds from the CARES Act in the amount of $150,000 to the General Fund for Business Relief Grant Program for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the program that we were just discussing, is the Renaissance Fund 2, which are cash grants for businesses that are suffering loss due to COVID-19. for businesses that are suffering loss due to COVID-19. And what we're proposing with the Round Two is that the grant would be up to $150,000, I'm sorry, $15,000 per business. And the business would, to be eligible, would have had to suffer some sort of a business interruption due to COVID-19, that they're physically located within the corporate limits of Waynesboro, that their taxes and any other fees with the city are current, that they're locally owned and operated. This wouldn't be provided to franchises and corporations, that sort of thing. Small business is one that would be, have anywhere between one and 20 full-time equivalent employees as of March of 2020. And that they aren't trying to, as we talked about earlier, get reimbursement for something for which they've already received reimbursement under another federal program. And that they may use these funds for a wide variety of things, either personal protective equipment at the business, other equipment or supplies that promote health and safety, technology to facilitate e-commerce or virtual business operations, professional services that are related to making their place of business more safe, disinfection and cleaning, inventory, equipment, rent, mortgage, utilities, payroll costs for the months of April, May, June, and July, principal and interest on business loans received prior to COVID. And the requirements would be that the funds then are expended in compliance with state and federal law. We're, at staff, has proposed $150,000 for the program. I think if, as the council's will to provide more, then I think you could certainly even double that amount. And we will still have a lot of CARES money. And so we send this money through the Economic Development Authority for its distribution, that we can't, as a city, directly distribute the money. So I would leave it to Mr. McCormick and Mr. Hitchens to figure out transfer of money and when it goes and all those types of things. But we can expedite that based on the council's appropriation.
Okay, do we have an ordinance to enter?
Well, could I actually ask a question?
Sure.
Before we move on to the next piece? With the $133,000 that was allocated and utilized in the first round, where does that leave the remaining $12,000? Because what I hear us talking about is if we introduce a higher quantity, where does that money sit until it is either used? Or does it then come back to us to reallocate at some future time?
It would come back to us. The $12,000 comes back to the city, yes. And then, you know, it would still be CARES money. It still would have to fall to a use under the CARES Fund, but it comes back to the city.
So that essentially what, you know, what I hear us considering is saying, let's give it a larger amount to start with so that it can be utilized more quickly. If there are not businesses that are eligible or applied, then it would still be able to be recycled into the program in another way.
Absolutely, that's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw, if you, if you all would like to increase this, we will need to do an advertisement and a public hearing and aggregate all the items on here because we're very close to the 1% limit on the budget amendment. But we could do that next meeting.
Do you know, Mr. McCormick, how far we can go before we would have to hit an advertisement?
I don't have the budget files in front of me, but we were very close. But you could double it, and we could do an ordinance, we could do an advertisement and then do a public hearing at the next meeting and adopt it at the next meeting as well.
Okay, so what Mr. McCormick's referring to is that we can only increase our budget by a certain percentage before we're required to have a public hearing. And while we actually have these funds in our possession, they're in our bank account, since we're transferring them into the General Fund and then to the EDA, that shows as an expenditure essentially. And so it sounds as if you could, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could introduce an ordinance to whatever dollar value the council thinks is appropriate. And then we would hold a public hearing on September 14th.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, so we would advertise seven days in advance, and then we'd aggregate all the appropriations that are on here this evening and just do them in one public hearing.
Okay.
Higher appropriations over.
Does that make sense to the council?
Yes, sir. All right, so is there a motion to introduce an ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd offer that we fund the Renaissance Phase Two at $300,000. And I guess, for discussion, I should probably ask this before I made the motion, but maybe increase that cap to $25,000. Again, if we're going to double it, let's go and increase it to $25,000 to try to, again, do those quick and fast infusions. So I'd make that motion, $300,000 and a $25,000 cap per. And also, under eligibility, under page 32 of the PDF document, maybe not strike, but add clarification to the sixth bullet, where it says, did not receive or been approved for an SBA PPP loan or economic injury disaster loan. We could provide clarification that you cannot use these funds to supplement previously approved PPP grants, grant proceeds.
Right.
So, yeah, so that's, that's the motion.
Okay. Mr. Shaw's made a motion that we increase the funding from $150,000 to $300,000 and increase the cap from $15,000 to $25,000. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second, Ms. Williams. Is there any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, this ordinance will be moved over to our September 14th, where I understand we'll have a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that brings us to item number eight, which is to consider introducing and adopting an ordinance appropriating CARES Act funding in the amount of $862,914 to the school fund to be used to support staff, provide PPE and cleaning supplies. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the school, the separate and distinct allocation that Waynesboro Public Schools received. And much like our process, they need to, or they're seeking to have this appropriated to their budget.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Or ordinance, I'm sorry, adopt the ordinance. Dr. Haasiter made the motion to adopt. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Terry. Terry adopted, made a motion for the second. Any discussion on this? All right, no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries four oh.
I believe this ordinance would need a second consideration.
Pardon me?
This is an ordinance that would need two considerations.
So it'll have to come back up and next?
It'll have to be.
All right, so we've got a first and second, and we'll bring this back up on September 24th, or September 12th.
September 14th.
14th. Thank you.
So even as a federal pass-through? Because they were the recipient, we're the beneficiary.
So because you're over the 1% threshold, we'll have to aggregate all the ordinances this evening into one and do one public hearing on everything at the next meeting, and then we'll pass them on, or you guys will vote on them at that point.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. That was item number eight.
That was 8A. We're at 8B. Do you want me to jump in?
Okay, 8B is to consider introducing an ordinance transferring $66,175 to assigned fund balance to Valley Academy Fund for the school, for the school board to reserve, to the reserve fund of the school board to support capital needs for the Valley Academy. Mr. Hamp?
Sure, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Valley Academy was formerly known as the Genesis Program, which was an alternative education program which was conducted by Stanton, Augusta County, and Waynesboro jointly. A year ago, Stanton withdrew from the program. And last year, Augusta County and Waynesboro, where since that time Augusta County and Waynesboro have been conducting the program with the city of Waynesboro, Waynesboro, excuse me, Waynesboro Public Schools as the fiscal agent. Now that that first year's audit has been concluded, there are funds that were jointly, for the three entities, that now need to be appropriated to Waynesboro Public Schools as the fiscal agent. And so this is an organizational transfer of funds that were once among the three localities, now coming to Waynesboro as the fiscal agent.
So we, we'll do a full vote on this one then, right? No, carryover? Okay. All right, is there a motion to adopt the $66,175 of assigned fund balance in the Valley Academy Fund?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haasiter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. This will carry over to our, are there any discussion? Or is there any discussion? All right, this will carry over to our September 14th meeting. Item number nine, item number nine is to consider appointments to various boards and commissions. Mr. Hamp?
So, members of council, this will be a two-step process. We have a number of boards and commissions for which there are one or is one vacancy and one candidate for appointment. And we'll deal with those, or the council will be asked to consider those appointments initially, and then we'll come back after concluding that to the Library Board of Trustees, for which there is one vacancy and two candidates. So in the first instance, the Shenandoah Valley Regional Airport Commission, council's asked to consider appointing Mr. Jeffrey Ward to a three-year term ending August 31st of 2023. Economic Development Authority Board, there are reappointments, Mr. George Reed and Ms. Tammy Radeke, each to a four-year term ending August 31st, 2024. Redevelopment Housing Authority Board, reappointing Mr. David Bullock to a four-year term ending August 31st, 2024. Parks and Recreation Commission, reappointing Ms. Donna Onby for a four-year term ending August 31st, 2024. The Historical Commission, reappointing Mr. Herman Wells, four-year term ending August 31st, 2024. Disability and Aging Board for Independence, Ms. Stephanie Painter, four-year term ending June 30th, 2021. And for the Cultural Commission, appointing Mr. Adolf A.J. Young, Jr., four-year term ending August 31st, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a motion to make these appointments as stated by Mr. Hamp? Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Haasiter. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's four oh.
Thank you. So then the Library Board of Trustees, the council's been furnished two names as candidates for one slide. So it would be appropriate at this time for a member of council, if so inclined, to make a nomination.
Okay. Do we have a nomination for the Library Board of Trusts?
Mr. Mayor, I've nominated Ms. Kenice Marshall.
Who's that?
Kenice Marshall.
Kenice. Terry's nominated Kenice Marshall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any discussion?
I just, profoundly, just about the entire process and the long list of folks that are willing to step up and help our community, appreciation, as well as Ms. Young, don't be discouraged. There's just a lot of folks that have expressed interest, and we appreciate her interest.
And I would echo that, that it's nice to have different applicants that are both interested. Unfortunately, we have one seat to fill on that board, so.
Yep.
All right, so we have a first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four oh. That brings us to item number 10, Communications, Correspondence, and Calendar. Mr. Hamp?
I do not have anything this evening, sir.
All right, item number 11, Citizen Comment Period. Do we have anyone?
I think Ms. McGuffin signed up, but she has scratched her name, so I think she's going to pass.
Okay. Any, do I need to announce the phone number? Nobody on the phone? All right. So we'll close Citizen Comment Period. This brings us to item number 12. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Terry. A second?
Second.